Vacation by Ms. Marion Fatida and Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Al Archer.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we gather tonight as one people ready to do your will. Empower us to be change agents for Christ when we encounter injustices in this world. As your children, may we always spread love, not hate, promote optimism, not fear, encourage peace, not war. At the end of each day, may we always give praise and glory to you, the source from which all good things come. Help us to stand strong in the faith and to love our neighbors as ourselves. We also ask that you continue to bless our beloved school district and place a hedge of protection around its people. We all ask this in your holy name, amen. He's got his mic off.
Come on, Al, turn the mic on.
Hear me?
Yes.
We've got it.
Got it? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Archer, thank you, Ms. Fatida. Roll call.
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Huddleston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Yeah.
Ms. Fatida.
Here.
Dr. Bro.
Here.
Dr. Guyot.
Here.
Ms. Bourgeois.
Here.
Mr. Dufresne.
Here.
Mr. Schwest.
Here.
Mr. Plazons.
Here.
Mr. Duplannas.
Here.
Mr. Lafont.
Here.
Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
We have a forum. In public participation, public comments will be accepted during the live stream of this meeting. To submit a comment, please comment on the feature of LaFouche Parish District Facebook page. Comment will be read prior to votes on any item on the agenda. We do have a lag in communication between when the comment or question is posted and when we receive it. So please be patient with this if you can. Two, approval of board content agenda. A, approval of board content agenda items. B, minutes of regular school board meeting held April 8, 2020. C, minutes of board member virtual in-service held April 8, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Harold Adams, second by Mr. Henry Lafont. We're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Babin.
Yay.
Ms. Huddleston.
Yay.
Ms. Thomas.
Yay.
Ms. Fatida.
Yes.
Dr. Bro.
Yay.
Dr. Guyot. That's yay for Dr. Guyot. Ms. Bourgeois.
Yay.
Mr. Dufresne.
Yay.
Mr. Schwest.
Yay.
Mr. Plazons.
Yay.
Mr. Duplannas.
Yay.
Mr. Lafont.
Yay.
Mr. Archer.
Yay.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yeah.
Motion passed unanimously. Three new business to receive report from Superintendent Morton on the current operations within the LaFouche Parish School District. Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and members of the board, thank you. The first thing I'd like to go over are the approvals that have been made on behalf of the board over the last month. The first is to award the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder to CNB Computers for the Dell OptiPlex 5040 sixth generation at a cost of $644 each, including shipping with a six-year warranty. This was per the IT Department's recommendations. We also awarded to the most responsive and responsible bidder, according to lowest bid items prices referenced for bid items list for janitorial supplies. Third, we approved the job description for the position of network administrator. This is the position that I spoke to you about earlier today. This is to replace the position held by Mr. Jamie Chauvin before being moved up to the IT director. This position will be an entry-level analyst and will be a savings to the school district. We also have an approval for change order, a credit change order for $297 for eliminating ponding existing in the low roof areas at WS LaFaugue Elementary School. And we have a credit change order at the South LaRose Elementary School Cafeteria Edition for $2,500. The contractor found some additional board in the ceiling of the demo site that required some abatement, and so the increase of $2,500 is a result of that through that project. Do we have any questions from the board as it relates to these approvals that we've done on your behalf over the last month? Okay. Upcoming bids and RFPs will be advertising the bid items for COVID supplies. Matt Service and Rental next week. We have an RFP review for IT department needs and a bid award recommendation for toner, excuse me, for ink toner will be submitted next week. Also, some general updates, and this is a review of some of the many things that you received via email from me. We currently have 22 teacher vacancies that are posted online. I think that from our homepage, if you go to it, you can see very clearly a blue link on the left that Dean put there that shows exactly what schools have teacher vacancies. And then right below that, there's a link to TalentEd where anyone interested can apply for those positions. Federal programs, Ms. Ankleage's team and the entire staff submitted the Strong Start Plan. That is done, it was due May 29th, that's been submitted. And we've also submitted for our incentive funds. As mentioned last month, the CARES Act came with basically a block grant of money that we received according to Title I allocations. This priority incentive money we have put in for, and we're going to get the award notification Friday, June 19th. So we'll find out if we're able to receive any more federal funding as a result of the COVID-19 process. McKinney-Vento Grant, good news. This mandated program has been awarded $148,959. This is a very good thing because it helps offset this federally mandated program. So that's going to cover the costs associated with both the position and the materials that we give to our most needy students, which is our homeless students. Super App 1920 final amendment was submitted Friday, May 29th, and the 2021 amendment is due on June 8th, and we anticipate meeting that deadline. The Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. I've been speaking to Mr. Archie Shassaw. The local government is in receipt of CARES Act money. The CARES Act money that the local government has been received that was called the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. And we are communicating with the local government to see how much of that money we can use to shore up our school system through either devices, through cleaning solutions, and other practices we're going to have to put in place to ensure that we can open schools safely. Early childhood care centers COVID grant application. Relief funds available to childcare centers in our Network 3 cohort. And again, that's due Friday. Ms. Ankleage's team is taking care of that. And also, the early childhood lead education application was submitted May 29th. So on behalf of Ms. Ankleage, that's everything she's had going on. Any questions to her team, myself, from the board? Okay. Curriculum. We have summer school beginning very shortly. Applications closed today. And we have received 42 teacher applications to be part of this program, and we've received 815 students to be registered in our summer program. And again, this program is going to be a virtual and much likely ended the school year. And so we're excited to continue to offer educational opportunities to our children through the month of June through this program.
I have a quick question. For summer school, do the students have to apply to go to summer school? And if so, where do they get their applications? And is it over with? I know I wasn't aware of it, but is that, have we reached a deadline for applications?
I think that, yes, ma'am, I think that the deadline was today. If it wasn't today, it is tomorrow. But if the, if the person, if you have constituents that are interested, we still have positions available. We closed it so that we can go through the staffing process and get the right number of people. But we're not interested in turning folks away. We have enough staff members to cover anybody who's interested. So if you have somebody that's interested, point them to Mr. Kenny Delcum and Ms. Nancy Giro, and they can get him in there. Mr. Delcum, I know that you're on the call. Can you speak to the application process?
Yes, sir. The allocation process, as advertised on our Facebook page, did close today. But of course, as you said, we're here to educate kids. So any kids that want to sign up beyond today, we're surely not going to turn them away. We can all, we're actually very much under budget right now in terms of hiring teachers for this program. So we have a lot of flexibility, and we can definitely take on more students as needed.
Okay, and you say it's virtual. Are we supplying the Chromebook for the students if they don't have it? If they don't have access to it, or?
Yes, ma'am. Part of, part of the application, which was, which was posted on a Facebook page, part of that application was a question that asked if the student needed a Chromebook or not. We had about, out of almost 900 currently, as of this afternoon, we had about 100 students indicate that they needed a Chromebook. Those requests were passed on to the principals, and the principals have reached out to those parents to make arrangements for the, for that Chromebook to be given to the student by next Monday, which is our first day.
Okay, and how long will this program last?
It'll go for three weeks, and it'll, it'll be a Monday through Thursday for those three weeks. So 14 days, 12 days, excuse me. And we're going to teach English for 90 minutes in the morning, and that'll be followed by math lessons for another 90 minutes as well.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Delcum. Anybody have anything else about summer school? Mr. Plazons?
Thank you. Mr. Delcum and Mr. Morton, I'd really like to say thank you for being kind of fluid with this situation. I know our situation is a little different than normal. So allowing, you know, any kid that wants to be able to take summer school is greatly appreciated by our entire student body and constituents alike. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plazons.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, moving along, the business department is crafting the 2021 budget projection. Ms. Lafont and her team are hard at work and busy at that. And the S A MOUs are complete, and the I D E A MOUs are in progress. Maintenance land and facilities, you all know they've been working without stop through this whole process. Maintenance, as of note, they've begun installing Plexiglas for our schools and all of our areas where we interact with the public. I'm sure all of you that have been out and about in the grocery stores and the restaurants have seen this practice of trying to put a physical barrier between employees and the public. We're doing the same thing for our schools, and Marcus and his team have been just phenomenal responding to those needs and getting those things up there. And also, of note, the Central LaFouche Sewer Project is well underway. Quite a large process they've got going on over there. And Mr. Plazons has been good about being there daily and checking on that process, and we feel good about where we are. There is one slight change in that. The dirt that was pulled out of that hole is not ideal to go back in the hole because it's of a variety that's not good to put semen on top of. They want a sandier soil so it doesn't compact. And so we're going to bring some river sand in as opposed to the blackjack we pulled out. But the school has a plan to use some of that and shore up some of our athletic fields and surrounding areas that can use some additional dirt, and the contractor is going to remove the rest of it. Any questions about maintenance land and facilities, current operations? Okay. Technology, you know, we still have the Chromebook loaner program. Mr. Shassaw is working through the process of formulating a good plan to get the Chromebooks that we've loaned out. The students are not going to use them for summer school back. And then the more daunting task of getting Chromebooks to even more students potentially in the fall that need them. Also, he's developing a MiFi, which is the mobile hotspots, a distribution plan for that. And again, that's all going to be funded through the CARES Act. Just to remind you all, the last time I briefed, with the money we receive from the CARES Act, the vast majority of it is going to buying Chromebooks, and a huge part of it is going to buying 5,000-plus mobile hotspots for our students that won't have internet connection. Should we have the need to have to provide an online or distance learning to our students, we'll be able to provide that to all of our students. Those with internet access and those that need it, we'll be able to provide it. Food services, Ms. Fletcher and her team continue to serve grab-and-go meals. We're prepared to do that through June. And the biggest initiative that she had as of late was this P EBT program that the state did, which is a process by which families of children that were on free or reduced lunch or attending a school where all of the children are given free and reduced lunch are eligible for an EBT card, which would allow them to go and buy groceries at a store. And they can get this additional funds added to their cards if they qualify. And so the State Department pushed all of these questions down to the local LEAs, which is us. And so a lot of our community members have been calling, and our food services department has been phenomenal in directing them into how to get these funds, how to gain access to them, and to be able to provide healthy nutrition to their families. So we're very appreciative of the work that Ms. Fletcher and her team have done and walking the community through this process. Lastly, as it relates to the update, the return to work plan. Monday, June 8th, all 12-month employees will be back at work, and we will be resuming our normal hours of operation for the summer. Remember that these are four 10-hour days. So we'll be getting early and then moving through Monday through Thursday. And this return to work plan went out to all employees via email, and we have some processes and some procedures in place to guarantee all of our students, excuse me, all of our employees' safety. We'll be practicing many, many guidelines, and the document that we submitted is pretty all-encompassing. And it gives our employees some very strict guidelines. For example, if you have a fever, you need to stay home and take a sick day. If you have a combination of mild fever and a cough, you definitely need to stay home. While we're in the work area, we're going to close the commons areas, such as break rooms and whatnot. You can go in, microwave your food, put it in the refrigerator, but we're certainly not going to sit down all in the same break room and potentially spread this virus. So we've had to put some changes in place to make sure that we're healthy and we keep our employees healthy. But we will all be back at work on a full-time basis beginning Monday. That's it for my update. I do have a couple of things that I also want to mention. There is a tropical storm, Tropical System Depression, whatever name it has today, I believe, near the Yucatan Peninsula. And it looks like it's going to be headed north, as I'm sure all of you know. We've already given, through Mr. Danoff, directives to our principals to shore up their school sites, to clean all of the drains and all of the catch basins, and to pick up anything that could become a projectile in a high-wind event. So by the end of the day on Friday, all of our facilities will be prepared to respond to any severe weather we get. And I'll answer any questions that you guys have as it relates to school board business over the last month or going forward.
Jared, Ray Bernard.
Yes, sir.
With 22 openings now for teacher positions, is there a contingency plan in place when August comes around? Some teachers apprehensions about going to school because of COVID-19?
Not specifically, but we've, we've spoken as a staff about many, many contingencies. And as you know, we're really preparing for three different school years. You know, if, if things are, if we're in a situation where in August we have a large number of teachers that are apprehensive about returning, I think that step one we need to do is to educate and make sure that what we're doing as a practice doesn't put people in harm's way to sort of ease those fears. And, you know, without speculating as to how many students would return based on those fears, I can tell you that opening up in a traditional way is going to come with a lot of challenges, both from a student and a teacher's standpoint. We're preparing for any and all courses of action, but I believe that we have some opportunities to potentially use some teachers to deliver virtual education if there's a high population of students that choose to do that as well. And so some teachers could do virtual, some students could do virtual, and then we could do traditional. But in a perfect world, all of our teachers feel good about coming back, and all of our students feel good about coming back and we're able to open up. But there's a lot of hurdles to get over before we get to that place. And I'm sure our state officials are going to give us more clear guidance as we get closer to July on how to navigate that.
I have another question. Will, will we be able to meet physically in July, or will it still be a Zoom meeting?
I'm glad you mentioned that. That was actually the last note I had. July 1 will be an in-person meeting. And we will also resume pending the board president's approval and the committee chairperson's approvals. My recommendation is that we begin having committee meetings in July as well. And that way, you know, we can have a normal board meeting July 1 in person, begin committee meetings through July, and then by the August board meeting, pick back up into normal operations and potentially remove the emergency tag from the, you know, from me and the board president, and allow normal operations once committees are allowed to resume. But again, that's assuming we continue stepping forward with the state guidelines, and we don't slide back into Phase 1, which would prohibit such activities.
Thank you.
I have quite two questions, actually. First, I wonder, have we given any thought to doing what the LSBA has asked us about a resolution opposing the state central tax collection? You know, we got, got it in an email from Janet Pope, and she's asked that all the, all the different organizations go ahead and do a resolution. Have we thought anything about that?
Yes, and my understanding, and I'm glad that Mr. Romney is on the call, is that under the current circumstances, should this thing go forward, and it looks like it may, I believe that on your behalf, the board president could craft that resolution, and I could approve it, and it would have the same weight of a full resolution. And so the legislature has done some things in that, you know, this bill came up, and then it was ostensibly killed because it was tabled. And then they immediately stand up this second session, and now it looks like it's going to be potentially heard as early as tomorrow. So I don't know how much effect the resolution is going to have, Ms. Fatida, to be perfectly candid with this thing already being heard tomorrow. But if we think that it would be beneficial to oppose it, and we all know we want to oppose it, that's not what I'm saying. The question is, do we think it would have any effect on the legislative body? And if, to the extent that you think it would, and I believe that we could, in fact, pass that on your behalf, knowing that it would have the full support of this board because we recognize with what Amanda has told us about state centralized collection that it would be bad for us. Mr. Romney, could you elaborate on that process?
I can. I am aware that it's executives, it's special session, House Bill 14, that's being heard tomorrow. And we've already notified Emory Belton, who is the lobbyist for the school board, to put in red card on behalf of LaFouche Parish School Board. I can also tell you that, to my knowledge, School Board Association will be there opposing it with their full weight. I anticipate the municipal association, the Police Jury Association, the Sheriff's Association, and probably other local government entity associations will also put in red card on this. The, the bill is for the constitutional amendment that would then give the state the right to centralize the collection of sales and use tax, both local and state. Now, last session, there was House Bill 791. That was Tanner McGee's bill. And there was, there was an agreement that was basically reached that would allow there to be a portal for all collections, both state and local, with a similar tax ID number for sales taxes and so forth. And of course, we, we being all of the different associations, local government entities, acting in good faith, thought that this was the end of it, at least for 2020. And lo and behold, it comes up again. So I expect that there'll be vast opposition. There'll be a red card in place for LaFouche Parish School Board, and I imagine many other entities will do the same. I am not going to Baton Rouge tomorrow, but I'm going to watch it, the virtual broadcast of the committee meeting, and can report back as to the status of it. So I, that's what I know today.
But once it gets out of committee, it still has to go to the legislature, so we have another chance.
That's correct. It would, you know, it's got to go through the process, and this is a, you know, a 30-day session.
Right.
Which is a concern because sometimes things get ramrodded through, and, you know, you don't have as much vigilance with, with what goes on in these, in these quick sessions like this. So, but I can assure you, this is one of those hot-button bills for local governments. And so we're, we're watching it very, very carefully, and I think everyone will take the appropriate action.
Good. My, my other question is, I would like us to consider writing a letter of congratulations to our new state superintendent of education. He is a champion for early childhood education. He has come through the ranks of the system. He's from Louisiana and met all of the criteria of superintendency. So I think that, you know, it would be appropriate maybe for us to consider writing a letter or sending a notice of congratulations to him and letting him know that he has our support. Just, just a thought.
No. He was a great choice.
Definitely, we can craft something on that, Ms. Fatida. I did read that he was starting on the 8th next Monday, so it's, it's not something that's too delayed or too late, but we can definitely put something together.
Good, I think that would be a good idea if everybody's in agreement.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
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 Thank you, that was my question.
Is anybody in disagreement? I guess that would be a better way to say it. I heard a lot of yeses. Do we need a roll call, roll call vote on this, or it's just?
Go ahead and do it, Brooke.
Go ahead and do it.
Ms. Fatida, you want to, you want to do a, like, you want to make a motion?
Well, it's not an agenda item. Can we do that?
We need to vote to put it on the agenda item, or do y'all just want to?
You need to, you need to vote and have it unanimous to put it on.
Right, so I mean, we can't, Pat, we just can't say, you know, as a board, we would like to do this. Do we have to vote?
Well, I think, I think that, under the circumstances, the superintendent can send a letter without your approval. And I think he was likely intending to do that anyhow at some point in time. So I don't think you have to vote on that issue.
Okay. But be sure it's on behalf of our board.
Absolutely, and I'll make sure that you guys see what we're sending before it gets sent. So you can make any adjustments and make sure that everybody is, I know everybody's intent was to sign off on that and send it on your behalf, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin, we have some questions on the Facebook feed. One of the questions is, when will school registration paperwork be available? To be able to enroll in school for next year?
So that, that is now. They can, they can call their school, the school that the child will be attending, and make an appointment to enroll their kid now. Now, obviously, beginning Monday, that will be, you know, every day. But each school has on their webpage published the hours of operation that they're, that they're working. As an example, the high schools, because of the number of people that they have employed, they're pretty much open every day, all day. But some of the elementary schools have specific days, but beginning Monday. Just go to the school.
Thank you very much. And the other questions are in reference to school personnel, and I believe you addressed some of that. Some of the paraprofessionals have. Have typed in, you know, how would that look to them for the different phases? I know you did address that and some of them is how would it look like? And you did say you were preparing for three different phases. Do you want to expand a little more on that?
Yeah, so. Course of action one has the schools opening in a traditional way. Course of action two has this going purely virtual. And of course, course of action three is is a combination of the two of them. And nobody wants to do anything but course of action one. But the the conditions on the ground are going to drive that, right? How much virus is out there and what the state officials are telling us is going to is going to drive those decisions. So.
And they guidance come up later June, late June, possibly early July? Some of it?
That that's what we're assuming. The guidance could come out tomorrow, but I would be surprised if it came out that early. But if it has not come out by July fifteenth, I would be surprised.
So some of those questions could be answered more specific at that time.
Yes, and and you know, the general public, I I know how frustrating it is, and even our employees and how frustrating it is. But but these are, these are all issues that are going to be handled through the governor's office of homeland security. And they're going to be made statewide, as has been the case at every decision point since March thirteen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morton. For ten, anybody else has any other comments regarding the updates that he said? I know we have a few. More members that wanted to speak, but before we do that, is there any other questions specifically relating to updates and? What Mr. Martin spoke about? Okay, I'll move on. Yes, sir?
It's actually probably for Mr. Amity, about Mr. Martin may know as well. I know they put on the floor in the in the house the other day. About, I don't remember exactly which bill it was. But there's a there was a bill on the floor that basically was trying to allow the school boards to hire. Certain individuals instead of the superintendent like you just found. Do you know if that made it to the floor or not?
I I don't know the status of that bill, so I can look at, look.
Okay. It it mainly pertain for like principals and above. So like any hire would would basically go back to the school board instead of the superintendent.
Okay. I'll I'll take a look at that. The 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 act. Act one of two thousand twelve made the superintendent responsible for all hiring and firing decisions. And. School board simply approved the number of employees, but the actual day-to-day operation was vested with the superintendent. And I suspect that that again will be something that would be opposed by. You know, probably by the School Board Association itself. I don't know that for a fact, but I'll I'll check on it for you. And find out.
Any other questions? Or comments? For ten of the dates for future meetings, A, regular school board meeting have Wednesday, July first, twenty twenty. And B, are the meeting dates will be announced accordingly. I know Ms. Valerie Bourgeois had an announcement she wanted to make.
Yes, ma'am. I have been talking to you guys about the O N Associates STEM Challenge. They have completed that challenge. I'm going to read the email that he sent me announcing the winner from LaFouche Parish. From Doug Bro, who is a product of LaFouche Parish, just was born and raised here. His family still lives here, but he lives in Atlanta. And has an architectural firm. In our continued support of public education, Bro and Associates Architects, BXA, created and hosted a social media STEM challenge. For elementary schools during the COVID-related closings. The Build With Bro Challenge asks students or parents and or teachers to post students' completed architectural STEM activities on Twitter, Instagram, or Facebook. After two months of activity activities, the elementary school with the most unique posts would be awarded a new three D printer from BXA. With the support and enthusiasm from educators and parents, the STEM challenge took off and was a huge hit. There were well over twelve hundred posts from elementary schools in several states. In fact, LaFouche Parish School District displayed a strong showing with the winner. Cut-off elementary school finishing in the top ten. Congratulations to Cut-off Elementary Schools Administration staff, parents, and students for their tenth place tie finish overall. Since LaFouche Parish is my childhood and family home, I decided to award a prize to the top finishing LaFouche Parish Elementary School. In the Build With Bro STEM Challenge. Therefore, BXA is happy to announce that we will donate one thousand dollars to Cut-off Elementary School toward the purchase of a new three D printer. And related supplies. So congratulations to Cut-off Elementary for a job well done. They were first in our parish and tenth tied to tenth place overall in their whole Build With Bro Challenge. So I'm very proud of them.
Congratulations. And thank you, Ms. Bowe, for bringing us that update and good news.
I'd also like to, excuse me, Ms. Hurst, if you have a moment. I'd also like to say congratulations to all the seniors. I attended Central LaFouche High School graduation and watched South LaFouche and Thibodaux High Schools graduation. And it was so, so well done. And thanks to the principals and the students. It was great to be on the fields for those graduations. And it was neat because the Central's high schools must tell my age a little bit. The night that they had graduation was the fortieth anniversary of my graduation on that same field. So it was neat to be there. It was still nostalgic. So congratulations to the seniors and Mr. Morton and the principals for a job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Bowe. I know Miss Cheryl Thomas has something to to read and see. Ms. Thomas?
For allowing me to do this. Oh, I put, I don't know if any of you went on my Facebook page, but. I put out a letter about the recent things that's going on. Not just, not fortunately, not here in Thibodaux, but all around us. And it weighed heavy on me. And I had to speak on it because it's something that we need to address as elected officials, I feel. If you don't stand for something, you'll accept anything. And this is a letter that was put out by myself, Councilwoman Constance Johnson for our district seat. And our councilman Jerry Jones. And the letter states that we would like to start off with prayers and condolences to the families who have lost ones. Who has lost loved ones due to the COVID pandemic. I'm just going to paraphrase it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. You can see it on my Facebook page. And we are also offering healing prayers to the many victims that are still recovering. At home with medical facilities or in medical facilities. The virus is very serious, and we urge everyone to continue taking the proper precautions. By following the governor's guidelines until further notice, we should all be social distancing. Wearing protective masks or coverings when entering public places. And by doing this, you're not only protecting yourself, you're protecting other people. And if even if you don't think about yourself, let's think about others like your grandparents or your parents. And it's not just older people now, it's touching younger people and children. Another thing that is bothering me is with deep sorrow and compassion. That we have to address African-American fathers, mothers, and grandparents who are struggling with the fear of losing their children. To brutality and unnecessary use of force by police officers. We know that you are afraid of receiving that phone call, whether they will safely return home or not. But is your elected, but as your elected officials, we will not tolerate racial profiling and criminal behaviors involving law enforcement officials. Yes, we're sick and tired of the unnecessary killing of black males at the hands of police officers across the USA. We have to admit that the majority of police officers are fair and honest. But there are a percentage of officers who are operating on a negative racist agenda. As parent, as a parent, and as relatives of black males. We too are afraid regarding their safety when they're encountering police officers. Who may be operating within our communities without proper training or correct supervision. We we take comfort in knowing that not only African-Americans, but all other races. Are not in agreement with the inexcusable behavior by these police officers, and they too are requesting justice for. And we're grateful for that, that all of us are standing together finally to fight this demon that we have in our world today. We are living in times where we all have a stake in what has and continue to occur regarding unjust police actions. Against black people and residents in lower-income communities across this nation. And we must all work together to conquer and eradicate these types of unacceptable police behaviors. We should start with ourselves by working together for equal justice for all. And by spreading love throughout the country and not hate or any other ugly rhetoric. This is the land of opportunity for all, no matter what your race is, no matter what your ethnicity is. Please do not allow the recent murder of Mr. George Floyd. Floyd to discourage you from operating within the law and do as doing what is right and decent. Let us not forget the ones who stood before us and have given the ultimate sacrifice in order for us to live safely and freely. We should. We would like our constituents to know that we will stand up against injustices involving anyone that may be victimized. We cannot change what's in a person's heart. Or how they were taught to perceive us because of the color of our skin. And we know that there are people in this world that will never accept us for who we are, and that's their prerogative. We only ask that you treat us fair and equal as you would do in any situation. We need to admit that racism is alive and present and present in the United States of America, and our lives do matter. However, we do not believe change can be developed with a, we we do believe that change can be developed. With a meaningful dialogue. All we have to do is just sit down and talk to one another. Admission is the beginning of a new start, and we have suffered throughout our lives with some form of racism. African-American citizens are upset and bitter because of the past and current unlawful actions by police officers. Many feel like they have never get a fair chance, and no matter what they do. They are targeting the schools, community, and often in their jobs. They're at their breaking point because it appears that they, there's a no-win situation. Often when they attempt to make formal complaints, the officers ignore them or the administrations because of past criminal records. Or previous police complaints. The cry is, what do I have to do? Or say to be rejected or accepted? All they want is a fair chance and equal opportunity at life. To live and rear out our children in this great USA. A nation that was built on principle by the hands of our forefathers in a country we love and also contributed to. Land of the free and home of the brave. And I pour my heart out, as well as Councilwoman Johnson and. Councilman Jones. It's been a lot from COVID, and then we go to this, but. If we just sit down and have conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, and like to thank Ms. Constance Johnson and Mr. Jerry Jones for standing together as public officials in this capacity. We have parish, city, and school boards, so thank you very much for sharing the thoughts from those representatives. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to share or say?
Brooke?
Yes, sir?
A couple of things. First of all, I'm glad to see Miss Cheryl is looking healthy. She's back with us. I'm glad to see that. Randy, we're going to be thinking of you next week, bud. I'd like to compliment the principals, their staff, and the students. Who took an impossible situation for their graduations and made it a very memorable one. I thought they all did an excellent job, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Very, very nice. Anybody else had any other questions or comments? Excuse me.
I just want to thank, I too want to thank Cheryl for sharing that letter with us. It's very. Touched touched the hearts of a lot of people I know. And I think we have some great communities, and I I agree, working together. We can, and we have peaceful communities, and I think because of the dialogue and because we have. We have put our faith in God and and help and help. To work together. And so thank you for sharing that, and also want to wish Randy luck on Monday and know that we'll be praying for you.
Thank you, Ms. Fertitta.
I want to thank everybody for the prayers, for me and my mother. Your prayers were heard. We went through a lot, and I just answered your prayers, and he just sent us home, and I'm so appreciative of everyone. And I just really appreciate you all for thinking of, thinking of us in our time of need. Thank you so much.
This is Randy. I'd like to congratulate all the principals and administrative staff and everything for the graduations that they did pull off. They did good. In fact, they did great. It was very nice, the ones I went to and stuff like this. Secondly, I thank y'all for all y'all prayers. Or give it a shot, you know, give it a fight, guys. But thank y'all. Appreciate what y'all have done for me and what y'all plan to do for me in the future. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Schwes.
Hey, Brooke.
Yes, sir?
I'd like to say it is very good to see Ms. Thomas. It's been a long time. It's actually probably been a couple of months since we've seen her. And Mr. Schwes, good luck to you next week. But I'd also like to reiterate what Ms. Thomas said. We all have an obligation as as public officials. To to see each one of of ourselves as people, we're all people. Doesn't matter what color you are. And that means something. And just. You know, treat each other right, fair. We'll be a much better, in a much better place than we are today. So.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Anybody else? Mr. Harold, anybody else? If not, we did have one more question on Facebook, and I'm sure Mr. Morton can can elaborate on this. And or again, state that we'll have further recommendations or mandates coming in from the state government. There were many questions about face masks. When you're going to enter school as a parent and or as a student, will we require face masks? I know you talked about the the hardware and the Plexiglas being installed, but can you elaborate on when you would possibly have some some guidance on that, Mr. Martin?
Right, so we put out guidance for our employees today, and and whenever they're interacting with each other, we have strongly. Encouraged the the use of face mask, and if they're in a situation where they can't social distance, then they have to use a face mask. As for when we open schools, what that's going to look like and what the critical where, those decisions haven't been made yet. But what we are right now in our strongly encouraging. Anybody that walks into a facility today to to wear a face. As we're interacting with. anybody that walks into a facility today to, to wear a face mask as we're interacting with each other. So no answer for the school year, but for the summer, if a parent or children come to our campuses, we plan that they wear a face mask.
Is somebody, was somebody answering or commenting? Thank you, Mr. Morton. Is there anything further before we adjourn? If not, we are adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Bye, everyone. Thank y'all. Bye, Ms. Thomas.